He feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If the speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or member of the school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. I don't believe we have anybody signed up yet, but if anybody's here, they can sign up in the table. Please go ahead.
I have work right now.
Right there in the speaker's table, yep. And I think you can go ahead.
Okay. So just sign here and then go ahead.
Now, if you just want to let us know your name and address, yeah, please have a seat.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Karen Peer Lewis. My address is 17 Ray Street in Lynn, Massachusetts. So the reason I'm here today is I was hoping to advocate for the salaries for, of course, teachers, but also for support staff that I feel is often overlooked. I think with COVID, of course, there are shortages in many districts, but I feel like Lynn definitely has to make that a priority so that it can appeal to teachers and support staff. I feel, I'm sorry, especially thinking of the students that are in special education that highly rely on paraprofessionals and also the kids in general, you know, it's really necessary. And if you look right now, like substitute para is like $15 an hour. And I do want to just share like a quick note I had. My spouse was working here and he loved it, but unfortunately due to the low pay he had to go in. I think especially as we're looking for more representation in our schools, we have to, you know, really invest in the kids and in all of this because you can literally get a job at Target, Starbucks, you name it, and make more money. They don't, and I just, I don't know if you guys are aware, but they deduct lunch from the pay. They're not eligible for holiday or vacation pay right off the bat. So I think the last check was literally around $300 and I'm like, you know, we're a family. And I also was working in education previously to taking this year off. So as I moved to Lynn, I would love to, in the future, consider working here because I'm very invested in the community. So I think of my daughter who's a student at Lynn Public Schools and I would want things to improve for her, of course, and all the other kids. So I'm just here to hopefully, you know, raise that and also after school, as I know many parents say, that's super important, just having more opportunities for extra math help or all these things. I just hope that these are priorities that are in the budget. So that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other people in attendance that want to sign up for open mic? Great.
I'm here because my daughter goes to the third grade on Drew West Street, oh, I'm sorry, Drew West School. And I'm concerned about the virus. What are you guys are gonna do in the next few days because, you know, the virus is in everybody right now. So right now, I think it's worse than before. When this thing started in 2020, I think the students went on Zoom. And at that time, the virus was hearing more to the older people. So right now, we see on the news, many, many kids are at the hospital. So I'm concerned about what you guys are gonna do about the, if there's some kids, they can have the opportunity to go by Zoom or they're gonna stay online or I just want to know what. I'm concerned about the virus. And I know many, many parents are concerned too, but unfortunately, they're not here right now because I think they have to work. Many of them, you know, have a full-time and part-time jobs and because, you know, the life right now is not easy. So everything is all the way up. So I'm here for this, for, I want to know what you're gonna do for this thing. A couple of days ago, I got the message from the school saying the school doesn't have many COVID tests, many kids, many COVID tests. So I just want to know when you're gonna guys, gonna provide more COVID tests to the kids at the school. Because in the last three days, I asked my daughter if she got any test at the school. She told me no. And then my other concern is about the early release, which is every Wednesday. So I think three times, every Wednesday, they leave around 12:45 and I think once a month, they leave 11:45. So for me, and I know for many parents, but like I say, unfortunately, they're not here right now, it's like, it's too hard for us because we have to work. And then four times, I think it's, I think it's too much. I have family, they live in Stonem. It's only once a week, once a month, they leave early. I have another family, they live in Tuxbury, they don't have these issues. So I honestly, I can, maybe you can do something about it. I remember when my daughter started, she started at the kindergarten, I think was early release once a month. So now it's every Wednesday. So for me, it's tough, for my wife too. We have to work. So I hope you, I hope you understand, we have to work, my wife has to work and also me. So maybe you can do something about it. For me, it doesn't make any sense, especially the last, especially the last Wednesday when they leave around 11:45, except for example, for January this month, they're leaving on 26 around, yeah, 11:45. So it's only four hours or three hours. For me, it doesn't make sense. So I don't know if my country was totally different, so I hope you understand my concern. So that says, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. I believe that's everyone in attendance that would be speaking at open mic and it's now 7:01, so we can head into the meeting. I'd like to call to order the first regular meeting of the Lynn School Committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Present.
Member Capola.
Present.
Member Dugan.
Present.
Member Gailey.
Present.
Member Magnolia.
Present.
Member Peña.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson. Present. I also believe we have our student school committee member from Lynn English. Welcome, Yariel Tejada.
Thank you so much.
Present.
Oh, present. [laughing].
Okay, great. We'll do a pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for the memorial.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize the passing of Robert Barnard, retired carpenter, December 5, 2021. Ruth Ann Silva, retired teacher, December 20, 2021. Diane Lynch, department head at English High School, December 26, 2021. First item is the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept five of the meetings. Policy Subcommittee Meeting on December 7, 2021. Policy Subcommittee Meeting on December 9, 2021. Personnel Subcommittee Meeting on December 9, 2021. Nineteenth Regular Meeting on December 9, 2021. And the first special meeting on January 3, 2022.
Second.
May I have a second? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Yes.
Member Capola.
Yes.
Member Dugan.
Yes.
Member Gailey.
Yes.
Member Magnolia.
Yes.
Member Peña.
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson. Yes. Okay, no appointments or elections, and so presentations, we have English learner education updates.
I'd like to invite Rania Caldwell, the Executive Director of English Learner Education, and Amanda Campbell, who's the Assistant Director of English Learner Education. And before they start first, I want to welcome Yariel, glad you're here. And also want to just acknowledge that the committee received last Thursday in their packet some documents related to this presentation. There was a one-pager that I'll come back to in just a moment, the title of which reads, Integrated and Designated ELD Models in SEI K-2. And then they received, received a slide deck. There's really two things that we intend to do with this English learner update part of the agenda. The first is give you some updates on the tiered focus monitoring review. Both Rania and Amanda will let you know where we stand in terms of that work. And then the meatier part of the presentation involves a discussion around a change that we intend to make in grades K-1 and 2 as it relates to how, the form and function of the day for students in those grades. And before they start, I just want to say that I think we all know that our student demographic has changed over the years. And in any school district, as your demographic changes in terms of, you know, who's attending, the racial and linguistic makeup of your student body, you know, a school district would normally make shifts and tweaks to accommodate other differences in who's there. That's perfectly natural. Lynn has done that over the years. But we're now at a point, as they will point out, in terms of the student demographic percentages, we're now at a point where shifts and tweaks are no longer sufficient. We have a model right now that's not designed for the overwhelming majority of students who are in grades K-1 and 2. And so we've put our best foot forward in terms of thinking, looking at the research, and deciding what would best serve the majority of students in those classes, and we intend to make a shift accordingly. I just want to be clear, in the one-pager, the very end, there's a what is this change and what it's not. I just want to be clear that this is not a new curriculum. This has nothing to do with licensure. This is simply a change in the form and function, the design of the school day for those grade levels. Okay, and with that, I will turn to, I don't know who's kicking it off.
I'm first. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rania Caldwell and I'm the Executive Director of English Learner Education here in the Lynn Public Schools, and joined by Amanda Campbell, as Dr. Tuttwiler just mentioned. Thank you for having us here this evening and, of course, congratulations to all of our elected officials at our first meeting here. For those of you who have seen our presentations before, you will always see both Spanish and English in specific colors. Spanish will always be represented in red and English will always be represented in blue. This is also a practice that we use in our dual-language Compañeros program so that students are able to leverage both program languages. So for tonight's presentation, we would like to give you a couple of quick updates and celebrations from the ELE department. First, we'll take a quick look at some data trends of our English learners. Then, as Dr. Tuttwiler mentioned, give you an update on our tiered focus monitoring progress. And finally, share some exciting news about some state and national recognition and some of the work that's taking place here in the district. So just a quick look at EL trends in the district. Here you have just a simple bar graph noting EL percentage numbers in Lynn from school year 1617 to the current school year. It is important to note that all of these numbers are available on the DESI District Profile page for anybody to view. School year 1617 to school year 2021 all represent June data, whereas the 2122 bar represents the most recent data, which is October 1. As you can see, Lynn has seen a consistent increase each year, rising from 19.9% to 36.3% of the total population since the 201617 school year, a 16.4 percentage point This next slide represents the same bar graph as the previous slide, but also shows the EL trends in other Massachusetts schools with more than 12,000 students, such as Lawrence, Brockton, Lowell, Worcester, et cetera. Please note the black trend line representing EL trends in the Lynn Public Schools. You will see that the Lynn numbers were well below the majority of urban districts in school year 1617, but have now surpassed all but one district. And it's just under that district, Lawrence, which is at 36.7%. Lynn now has the third-largest percentage of English learners in Massachusetts, behind Chelsea and Lawrence. All other urban districts have seen small ups and downs in their EL trends over the years, whereas Lynn has not seemed to yet reach that consistent data trend of their EL demographic. Also note that the Lynn Public Schools is the only district represented that has not seen a decrease in English learners since 1617. In fact, the Lynn Public Schools was the only urban district to see an increase of English learners during the pandemic year initially in 2021. All right, so shifting gears from data, we wanted to update you on our tiered focus monitoring. In December 2020, Lynn was cited for partial implementation on two compliance indicators. First, program structure with a focus on elementary ESL service as well as the consistent decline of English learners making adequate progress in our classrooms. The second compliance finding was around the SEI endorsement. We do submit as a district monthly reports to the Department of Education so that they can monitor us working towards compliance. And our next progress report is actually due tomorrow. In terms of the SEI endorsement compliance finding, in 2020, 94% of our educators who were required to have that SEI endorsement had already obtained the endorsement. Of the 6% of educators that were not yet endorsed, there were approximately 50 educators that Deb Morell and our Curriculum Department has been in constant communication with regarding their status towards endorsement. Currently, approximately 15 of those educators are and will be enrolled in an SEI course by spring of 2022. Other teachers are pursuing alternative ways to receive that endorsement, such as teacher prep programs or by taking the SEIM tell. The other compliance indicator that has been an ongoing focus in our department is ELE program structure. There has been a lot of work in this area to support our English learners in language development by developing a plan that both increases service minutes and increases how language is embedded throughout the entire instructional day. Since our DESI review, we have offered professional development to educators focused in pursuing the ESL license. As we have had ongoing discussions with the Lynn Teachers Union regarding ESL licensure for kindergarten teachers, we have met monthly with a principal group to discuss the elementary schedule structure and ways to address language and content with our students. And we've also been working towards K-2 interdisciplinary unit enhancements to build content and language simultaneously. This area was initially discussed at our March and May 2021 school committee meetings, but we wanted to give you a deeper overview of these enhancements, which will support our students in both language and content. As you can see, our K-2 data indicates an immense need to explicitly focus on language development in ELD and SEI instruction. We are currently 67% identified English learner in grades K-2, with 80% of those students in the early proficient stages of English proficiency, Level 1 and 2. In addition to identified Ls, across all LPS K-2 classrooms, we serve a vast majority of multilingual learners, with 75% of those students speaking a language other than English In our data analysis and discussions with teachers and school leaders, it is constantly noted that the traditional school structure does not allow for time to address the needs of our students, such as English language development, SEI supports, while also addressing all of the required content and language standards for each grade level. A combination of interdisciplinary units and scheduled English language development during the school day will strategically integrate language and content standards in a cohesive way to maximize teaching and learning, while also drastically increasing ESL service time. Students will be able to leverage vocabulary, academic language, background knowledge, and skills that repeat throughout a unit to provide multiple opportunities for practice. Since we know that ELD is an important part of our students' academic development, ELD will be offered in two different ways in all K-2 classrooms in order to elevate language development in our early elementary grades. First, all K-2 students, regardless of EL status, will receive integrated ELD. This will be a 35-minute integrated whole group ELD lesson, and it would be connected to the interdisciplinary unit. It would be led by an ESL licensed teacher, while non-ESL licensed staff would serve as a support in the classroom during that time. This would be part of the scheduled elementary day for all K-2 students. In addition to the whole group integrated ELD, identified English learners would be able to receive additional language development. So students like newcomers, students who aren't making adequate progress, would be able to receive an additional dose of designated ELD time during the small group instruction time, which is similar to the model that we see currently in our schools. Those groups would be determined by data, formative assessments, things of that nature. A combination of both of these ELD components, integrated and designated, would increase our students' explicit language development from an average of 22.5 minutes to 47 minutes of ESL service per day, while also making connections to language throughout the day in the interdisciplinary units, allowing students to really accelerate their language and content learning. I'm now going to shift over to Amanda Campbell, who has worked with many educators and teachers in the interdisciplinary unit process to talk about that in more depth.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Like Rania said, I'm going to share a little bit more about the interdisciplinary approach to teaching content. The interdisciplinary units are a really powerful cross-content area connection that gives our students the repeated exposure to language and content to really develop mastery as they're building those in a more cohesive way. And so by sequencing the content area cohesively across the year, the standards, we maximize both student time and teacher time. And so these interdisciplinary units, they place the students and the grade level standards at the very core of what we're doing. So in this approach, approach, we think about it like this. We teach our kids the grade level standards using interdisciplinary units and big ideas through the use of high-quality instructional materials. So in order to develop these units, we think really carefully about who our kids are first and foremost, which is why we've spent so much time talking about the demographics. From there, we look at the grade level standards to see where there's connections and overlaps. And I've shared some of those connections before in our dual-language work. And then finally, we use the high-quality instructional materials that exist in order to teach those interdisciplinary units. And this is, it's really different from the traditional approach, which often puts fidelity to the resource at the core as opposed to the needs of our students and fidelity and alignment to the grade level standards. And so these are some examples of texts from the SEI kindergarten maps. There are supplemental mentor texts that we use within the interdisciplinary units. And because our students are at the core of these units, they're selected carefully by considering who our students are in our classrooms, the content area standards that the texts need to support, and how they connect back to the larger, big idea of each unit. And as you can see, there's a really wide variety of texts that are used to meet those standards across content areas, while also providing diverse perspectives that are much more representative of our student body than you would typically see in a published These interdisciplinary units, as I mentioned before, they're already in place in dual-language and they're also in our kindergarten classrooms. So we've gathered some teacher feedback on these units and we've included some here for you to look at. A few of the highlights include that teachers really appreciate not being limited to a scripted program. They really appreciate the real-world connections for our students and the built-in linguistic supports for our multilingual learners. Sorry, they look so similar. So in addition to the positive feedback we've received, our teachers have expressed some requests for updates and some changes. And so we've listed here some of that feedback as well. Our teachers are interested in additional supplemental resources, a shared drive to house those types of resources, some more structure to the weekly guides, and additional support and professional development. We've been carefully collecting all of that feedback all year long. A shout out to Jackie Gallo, who's been really great at collecting that feedback for us. And we plan to incorporate all of those revisions listed here for kindergarten and into the development of the grade 1 and 2 units. And so this work in developing the interdisciplinary units, along with some of our other initiatives, including our SEAL of By Literacy program, the implementation of the new language proficiency standards from WIDA, these have all been highlighted across the state. We've had the chance to present our work in numerous state meetings with other urban directors. We've also seen a really huge outpouring of interest in our district LPAC meetings, the EL Parent Advisory Council. We've had an average of 75 participants in our first three meetings of the school year. So we're really excited about the engagement we've had from the community over these past couple months. And we will be back before you next month to talk a little bit more about our dual-language program in more depth. But in addition to some of those highlights from ELE, our work in dual-language has been highlighted both across Massachusetts and across the nation this fall. We've had the opportunity to sit on panels to share our dual-language program. We've presented at some conferences and we are actively supporting other Massachusetts districts as they seek to develop and expand their own dual-language programming. And so here are just a few snapshots from some of that national recognition. So in addition to the panels and conferences we've presented at, Compañeros Dual Language has been featured in national presentations and webinars, and it'll also be featured in an upcoming book titled How Data Got Its Groove Back. It will be released later this year. That's the book in the middle. So that is it from us.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the committee? Member Gailey.
Is there any phonics in this?
Yes, absolutely.
There is?
Yeah.
Okay. And I've been guaranteed that there's only push-in and not pull-out. And I've been guaranteed that there's only push-in and not pull-out?
I'm sorry for which.
In kindergarten, there hasn't been any pull-out, but I'm hearing from teachers that there are pull-outs instead of push-in. And I'm hearing from teachers that they're teaching certain letters or certain things, and they get pulled out, and then they're being taught something differently, but it's going to be okay, because when they all get together eventually, they'll all be on the same page. That's what I was told. So I just want to make sure that they're being pulled in, they are being taught by a teacher, an ELL, and supported by the person in the classroom. I will never agree to a mandated license. I spoke to a group during my campaign, and they liked the idea when I said, "Why is it every teacher in the state of Massachusetts has to have a master's degree in five years?" So I can't understand why we couldn't ask new teachers coming in, if with the support of Lynn Public Schools, they could get their ELL license, instead of mandating teachers? Because I don't know if you know this, I'm sure you do, we've been losing a lot of teachers, and it's not just because of the salary. Salary is part of it, but the fear of having to, after 25 years of teaching, having to go and get an ELL license to teach what they've always been teaching. There was one more thing. Some of the Spanish people in our community believe that when they have that ELL license, then the teachers will be speaking Spanish, and that's not true. The ELL license just is going to give them strategies and approaches to help students to learn. So I just want to make sure that this is happening, and I don't know, I'll find out when the survey goes out, what's actually happening more. But thank you for your presentation and the update. I also looked into a school, I don't know if you'd heard of it, in Cambridge. It's called the Amigos, and they have the dual-language program. They have it in Spanish, they have it in Portuguese, and I think they have it in Mandarin. And I just was checking to make sure that they had phonics, because I wasn't sure if we have phonics. And I don't know how anyone in kindergarten or first grade can learn how to read if they don't have phonics. However, if, for example, Mayor Nicholson's son goes to the dual-language school, I'm sure he will have the support of the mayor and his wife, helping them with the English, teaching them phonics. But not everyone has that opportunity. So I am watching this like a hawk. I will never approve of a mandated license. And for those teachers out there, the mandated license is something that could move very quickly up K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, all the way to 12. So if I choose not to approve anything that's in our negotiations, it will be just simply because we cannot afford, as a district, to lose any more licensed teachers, period. And that I really firmly believe every teacher and staff member in our district that work in our schools, like you asked at the beginning of this meeting, we should be giving them 5%. I think 5% would be good, because that would maybe, just maybe, get us in line for our salary. But I wanted to get that out there, because if I end up not voting for this, it's going to be because there's a mandate for a license. And I don't think anybody other than the state of Massachusetts should be mandating a license. Thank you. Oh, and last year we had 70%, this year we have 67. We had Spanish speakers.
Member Gailey, I just want to say one thing first. Respectfully, I don't think it's appropriate to refer to my family to make a point about the policy.
Sorry.
Thank you. Dr. Tautwiler, and then I saw a member, Pena.
Yeah, at the outset, I made clear that no part of this presentation had anything to do with the license. It was simply around the form and function of the day, and how we were trying to be thoughtful around meeting the overwhelming majority of our students' needs. I don't know if Amanda or Rania wanted to respond to the idea of students being pulled out.
I will just say that in some of our schools, simply due to the size of classrooms and how many specialists may be pushing in at a particular time, there are settings where teachers do pull out small group for small-group instruction, but they do not pull them out during core content instruction. They would pull them out simply during the small-group time. But in some rooms, you can't physically have so many small-group tables in one space, and in some cases, the ESL teachers are pulling out into like a separate little room outside the door, or something of that nature.
I would also add, too, that some of the COVID protocols have changed the way that we're able to effectively deliver small group, and that sometimes we're not able to maintain the spacing that has been recommended to us. So that may change. I would have to see the specifics of the circumstance, but that may be a factor as well.
Member Pena, and then Member Capola.
Thank you, Amanda and Rania, for the presentation. I had a question. We're at 36% of our ELE students are the third on the highest, you know, among the highest in the state. Have we, and I looked at the website, Desi, Chelsea's about 5%, I think they're 40, almost 5% higher. Have we reached out to Chelsea or Lawrence to see how, what other methods are, what are they implementing? Have we reached out to them to find out? You know, I'm happy to see that we're innovated in some areas, you know, we're being innovated in some areas, and I like that we're keeping the focus on the students, and I'd like to see, you know, continue the progress. Thank you.
Great. And to your answer, we're constantly working with other urban districts. Chelsea is a much smaller district, so their numbers are much smaller than ours, but Lawrence, today I was just on a call with Revere, Lawrence, Chelsea, Brockton, Springfield, Boston. So we're constantly talking about the issues that are facing English learners across the state, particularly in high EL districts, and brainstorming ways to address kind of the traditional ways or structures in place across the state that we're all trying to change to benefit our students.
Thank you. Member Capola, and then Member Magnolia.
When you say not content, if you were saying the kindergarten, you know, and this is what we hear, is, you know, if they're being pulled out into the hallway, and the teacher inside is maybe doing the, you know, first third of the alphabet, but when they're pulled out, it's totally different part of it. So are you referring to like that? So there isn't a matchup to, you know, not being uniform about, you know, what's happening in the classroom, and then what's being pulled out? Should they be on the same page?
Right. So what we're saying is ESL instruction is supposed to happen right now during small-group time. So it's not when a teacher is delivering new content or material to students, it's when you might have reading intervention, or teachers working with small groups reinforcing or providing supports. The ESL curriculum is different, because language development, ESL, follows a different set of standards than your content-area teacher who's teaching the Massachusetts State standards for elementary. So they are addressing two different sets of standards, and therefore, yes, the instruction may be different, dependent on the student's proficiency level and the language standards that they are teaching. They are not teaching the content-area standards as the Massachusetts standards are being taught in the classroom. That's not there, that's not, those are not the standards that they teach. They have a different set of standards and a different curriculum.
Okay. My other question is probably not for you, but maybe for them. You know, last year at this time, we talked about, you know, approaching the colleges that are training the teachers in regards to the license, you know, because I've reached out to a number of kids that have left Lynn Tech and are in programs, teaching programs, and their thing is, they haven't heard a push from their schools in regards to, you know, adding on the license, and they're not overly interested in that either, the students, you know? I think pretty much what we thought maybe last year, that they would be, they want to get out, they don't want to spend more time getting an additional license before they graduate. So what progress have you made in that?
Do you want to, yeah, parts of the question, I'm not sure that I'm clear, so let me make sure I understand first. When you say that students aren't overly interested, you mean in attaining an ESL license?
An additional license, they are interested in graduating, getting, you know, getting that initial license?
Yep.
And getting out of school?
Yep. So.
Wondering what progress we make, because we talked about this last year.
Yeah.
Making sure that we are in touch with those schools.
Absolutely.
And they understand what we need.
Yep. So I'll let, do you want to talk about our work with Salem State around pre-service teachers?
And Ms. O'Malley's here, too, who oversees that. You know, we are working with Salem State to develop a cadre of teachers. We're offering fellowships in areas where we need teachers. Those content areas are math, ESL, and what's the other one?
Special ed.
And special education. I mean, we are engaged in that work with those colleges in attempts to recruit. We have fellows currently in the system. Are they exclusively at Sewell, Ms. O'Malley?
So they're at Sewell, and there are some at the secondary, too.
Harrington as well.
And Harrington, you have.
Yeah, so I mean, that's actively up and going, and we're looking to expand that in next school year. There is an interest in it.
And I would just add, and I saw you wanted to add something. You know, I can't speak to a student who said, "I don't have an interest in earning an additional license," but I'll tell you, much as I did last year, the idea of an English teacher, for example, being also required to have an ESL license is not foreign. In the Boston Public Schools, in the secondary level, at my high school, when I was at Brighton High School, if you're an English teacher, you had to have an ESL license also. They required it. And so, you know, the interest is one thing, but if you're going to work in a community serving the population that we're serving, you know, that is an important piece of understanding what those students need and how they learn, and thus meeting their needs.
And I'm not questioning, you know, that piece with you. I'm just questioning that, you know, we're struggling to keep up with the losses in the teaching here, you know? Like, you know, in the back of our agenda, you know, we have hires, and they're all, you know, not certified, not certified, not certified. So, you know, obviously, it's a concern to me. I want us to have certified teachers, teaching in, you know, all of the different areas. So if we're struggling and we're hiring people that aren't certified for any particular thing, then it's doubly hard to try to, and that's the concern I have, is that, you know, let's face it, when you're young and you're coming out of college, and you want that one license, and you want to move along, and you'll look someplace else than to look for us. And I'm concerned about the staffing that we put. I'm with Ms. Gailey as far as I don't support a mandatory license, but, you know, I support that we're doing things, and we're giving them the extra support. It's absolutely necessary, but I do have concerns about the license.
Understood. One quick comment, if I may, and then I'll let you answer, maybe two comments. The first, really quickly, is I don't, I would caution looking at the personnel scenario for our district right now and drawing a large conclusion, because we all know that this context is unique and extremely challenging, not just in this district, in every district in the state, probably across the country, as we read about and see that teachers are leaving for lots of different reasons, and districts are doing their level best to find people to come in and support the needs of students, and sometimes they're, they don't have their license. Thank goodness the state has in place an emergency license waiver that someone can apply for and get right away. So I just wanted to offer that caution there. And then, you know, the idea, right now, there is no second licenses offered or required in any grade. So that is a topic that's being discussed in negotiations. I don't know that it's appropriate for us to be having this conversation out here, given that it's a negotiations topic.
Okay, I think I had, oh, yeah. Yeah, 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 please.
That's okay. I was just going to add to your question about reaching out to local colleges. In our work to build a bilingual pipeline, which we'll talk about more in February, and in my role in the ELE office, I've met with, I think, pretty much every field office director, executive director in all of the local colleges, and we've placed many of their practicum students and pre-practicum students in the Lynn Public Schools. And from what I've heard, people are really excited to have the opportunity to work in the Lynn Public Schools, because we're one of the largest districts in the area, and they really get a good look at what it's like to be an urban educator. So we've started to build some really great relationships with them. I've met with Merrimack, Endicott, BU, BC, Salem State. I'm sure I'm missing some, but I've met with pretty much everybody, and they're all really receptive to the idea of placing students here for their pre-practicum and practicum experiences.
And I'll also just quickly add, we interview lots of staff. We have a lot of ELE staff and teachers. Many ESL staff usually don't start as ESL staff, right? It's because there's an opportunity, and then they end up being longtime ESL staff, and they are very appreciative of the opportunity to get support in professional development and in our district, working with our students. And once they start working with our students, they fall in love with ESL. And they also appreciate the marketability that they now, you know, in terms of being able to say, "I can teach ESL, I can teach Grade 2." You know, they're more marketable, they can do more in our district, but sometimes ESL is also what gets them in the door by pursuing that license, because not many colleges and universities may have robust ESL programs at this time.
I just had a question. How many fellowships do we have right now?
I think it's four.
Four, thank you, Eda.
If I can add also that we do have initiatives where we do MCal prep, we have MCal prep, and we have vouchers that we can help people get, like getting ESL licenses or communication and literacy.
Thank you. So I had Member Magnolia, Member Castellanos, and then Member Dugan.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have a super nuts-and-boltsy question about, when all students get their ELD led by the ESL teacher, I know the majority of our ESL students speak Spanish, but I am particularly interested in how, during that type of direct instruction, for students who speak languages like Arabic that do not have a Latinate alphabet, how integrated is the teaching of an alphabet system? Because we're talking about grades in which the alphabet is being learned. So if you could just talk just briefly about that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. So the interesting thing about navigating alphabetic versus non-alphabetic scripts is that when you start off in kindergarten, the best way to build up that understanding is through a lot of oral practice, which is exactly what kindergarten is designed to do, and what's also exactly what ELD is designed to do. So by giving kids a really healthy dose of oral language development right at the outset, leading into lots of opportunities for what we call like share-the-pen writing or modeled writing, "I'm holding the pen, I'm writing for you, I'm modeling that left-to-right directionality." You're giving me some input, you're saying, "Oh, miss, can you please put that?" I put my snow boots on first, and I'm holding the pen, and I'm saying, "Oh, which side of the paper do I start on?" Although, especially for our youngest learners, they haven't yet had the opportunity to build literacy in that first language. So in some ways, it's easier to start with that left-to-right orientation. In other ways, it is more difficult to build literacy in a language you're not yet proficient. But all of those opportunities for guided practice, and then, "Oh, do you want to come up? Would you like to put the letter P in here?" All of those types of things are really, really helpful for all students. And then, obviously, the ELD instruction is entirely in English, so that all students, first of all, because it's a, you know, English immersion program, but also all students then gain access to it. We also really recommend that teachers, because it's a really student-centric approach, that teachers know and understand who their students are and where they've come from. So if I know I have an Arabic speaker and I have seven Spanish speakers, when I put up my cognates, I'm going to include both. You know, there are a lot of influences from Arabic to English and vice versa, that you can pull to show kids like, "Hey, that word sounds almost the same in both languages, let's put it on our chart." And so that's a really great opportunity to also show value for those languages.
Thank you.
Member Castellanos?
Thank you so much for your presentation tonight. Always well put together. I want to congratulate you on that.
I want to congratulate you on national, gaining that national attention and putting, you know, this program and everyone, you know, on the map. It's very important work that you're doing. I think my colleagues, you know, everyone has voiced, you know, very valid points. I definitely, this is really not, you know, this is a very, this is a very important initiative. This is very important. When you look at our trends, like you said, over the last decade, it's going up. Can't ignore it. So we have to strategize and figure out ways to collaborate and innovate. DESI, you know, and I understand that we're going to be meeting with them tomorrow. I know you have a progress report on the 14th, you said, is that tomorrow?
We submit a written progress report, yeah.
So tomorrow. So, you know, what are we, so when we, what is the conversations looking like with the commissioner? How are they supporting us? And if they see the trends that we're looking at right now, we're seeing, and I understand we're working every day with the state, I understand. You know, what are they doing to incorporate support? You know, I would like to kind of have a conversation around that, because we are up against a big challenge. We're seeing growing trends. We obviously, we're just, we're going through a pandemic that we just keep getting hit with. And RLs, you know, if you look at certain, you know, data points of dropout, and you see, you know, there's concerns there. What is the, what is DESI doing? What does that look like?
So, you know, I want to be clear that the report that is due tomorrow is really around our progress towards things that are anchored in compliance. And so, you know, Rania and Amanda's relationship with their liaisons at DESI is really around, you know, what are the rules? And like, what are we doing to meet them, to be clear? I would say, separate and apart from that, I mean, there are financial supports from the federal government, Title III. I'd say, you know, there is an Office of Language Acquisition. I think that's what it is at DESI, which is, which does consult with districts to provide guidance and support as we navigate. I would say, as of late, they might be picking our brain more than we're picking theirs. Just to be clear, as you heard in the presentation. But, you know, it's not, it's not a difficult relationship. I just want to be clear. And I feel like that their supports, they're accessible. And, you know, from the standpoint of the commissioner, I mean, there's been, at least as long as he's been in that role, a real commitment to addressing the needs of English learners, so.
So that being said, kind of a segue into my next point, I appreciate that explanation. So for your, so for the program structure, I know we discussed the ESL internship from Salem State. I really appreciate that. And the opportunities for MTL vouchers, you know, when I see this point, I think about, how are they, are we, how are we capturing the access? Are we, is the staff accessing, you know, how are we collecting that? Like, is this, like, this is a compliance point that we're looking at right there, correct? Is that what you're saying? So one of the requests compliances from DESI, your liaison, you're going to say, "This is what we're doing," right? Do we have kindergarten staff accessing these resources for MTL vouchers? Like, how, like, do we have a number?
So I don't know about the vouchers. I know that many kindergarten teachers participated in our professional development course that ran over the summer. We have had a couple reach out in terms of internship opportunities for that. Debbie Morell in curriculum gathers the data for the vouchers, so I don't necessarily know the number to that exactly.
I want to talk about this, because our staff have been working tremendously, tremendously. And when I see this, I see effort, and I want to make sure that folks are getting that straight. When we speak to our liaison, to let them know that our staff have been working very diligently to hit those marks. And then let me tell you something, through this pandemic, our staff have been through hell. And to hit those requirements that are extra, we have some of the most resilient staff in this district and the state. And we can argue that all day long, respectfully. And I do, I appreciate your hard work, and I want to make sure that our staff are getting that recognition as well. And I do, you know, when I, when we see the, you know, the feedback that we're getting, are we getting the feedback through the principal discussions? Or how we collect the feedback directly through just all the staff? Like, just, could you just kind of talk about that?
Yep, absolutely. So Jackie Gallo, who is our Assistant Director for Curriculum and Instruction, Early Childhood Education, she holds monthly workshops with the kindergarten staff. At the conclusion of each workshop, there's a survey where teachers have the opportunity to reflect both on the content of the PD, the structure of the workshops that they're running, and the maps. And so we've been able to collect, that's directly these pieces of information. These are all direct quotes or a summary and compilation of several quotes that come straight from educators in their survey.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Member Dugan?
Okay. So I just want to read it. Brian said, "Thank you for all your hard work and your national recognition and state recognition. That's great to see." So thank you for that. A couple nuts-and-bolts questions. The first one, it sounds like so there'll be team teaching with the ESL teachers and the classroom teachers for 35 minutes today. Is that correct? Okay.
So it's not team teaching per se, right? The ESL teacher is leading the instruction. So they're planning based on, again, the language standards, SOVIDA, which is the state standards. And so they're, they're leading the instruction specifically in language development, but it's connected to the unit. So the unit, big idea, or language or vocabulary is part of that language instruction. And the general education teacher is in the classroom at the time. But really, the ESL teacher is the one leading that time. They are the ESL licensed teacher teaching those standards.
Okay. So that obviously would involve common planning time. Have we worked that into the schedule for the teachers, where they can collaborate and, you know, come up with these plans? Or is that something that's in the works, or?
So scheduling is done at the building level. Each building sets up their individual planning structures. The benefit of having a really cohesive mapping approach is that it allows everybody to know we're within this unit, we're within this, you know, these language functions, these language topics. So the ESL teacher would be the one, again, it will vary by building, because obviously, some classrooms have seven Ls, some classrooms have 27 Ls. And so the planning might look different at each building, but ideally, the ESL teacher is putting together the plan, planning it out, building out exactly what it is. And then the paraprofessional in the classroom teacher within the classroom might be working with the turn-in talks as they're doing them. It sort of depends on if they have a couple small groups running, maybe they have one independent application activity. That's how the classroom teacher would be supporting that. So it's not quite as involved as co-teaching would be, where you really absolutely need that planning time. But ideally, yeah, we would love to see buildings be able to put planning time in.
Great. All right. Thank you. That was that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah. Thank you again for the presentation. I mean, those statistics you shared at the beginning of the presentation are really arresting in the, in the need that it identifies, particularly just the increase, but also the increase relative to our peers. Obviously, something is happening that we need to pay close attention to and appreciate the leadership that you all are showing in doing so. And also, to Member Castellanos' point, the team that are in the classrooms are, that are doing this every day to make it work, and the families that are reinforcing that work at home. So thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. We'll see you next month.
Good luck with the submission tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So headed into new business, A and B are two votes to cancel the fourth regular meeting scheduled for February 24th and the fifth regular meeting scheduled for March 10th. Due to conflicts, I think we typically do those scheduling and probably would want to reschedule meeting dates if we can do that while we're all together here. So pull out the calendars here.
How does March 3rd look for people?
March 3rd. That's the Thursday before that, right?
You're right, in between the two, so.
Yeah, I think that works for me.
Hope not. Anybody have a problem with it?
March 3rd?
I can say yes for now, but I might have to follow up. March 3rd looks good for me.
What date? Yes.
Okay. Does someone want to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we cancel the fourth regular meeting scheduled for February 24th, 2022, and the fifth regular meeting scheduled for March 10th, 2022, and set a meeting for March 3rd.
Motion made, second. A roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. All right. The next item on the agenda is spectators at events. Dr. Tewiler.
Yeah, I just wanted to, the committee received a communication on January 3rd indicating a unanimous decision among all Greater Boston League school districts to pause athletics for approximately one week. It resumed this week, actually. But at the bottom of that memo, it mentioned, there was a statement around each district creating their own policy specific to spectators at the events. And I've been in contact with both our nursing director, as well as the city's health director. And they are prepared to support what the vast majority of Greater Boston League teams are doing, which is to allow two spectators per athlete at the events temporarily. There are, just to be clear, there is one school district, Somerville, that's allowing no spectators. And then there's one school district that has no restrictions whatsoever, and that's Medford. And all the rest are doing two per athlete. They will come up with a system that works, whether it's the student athletes identifying, you know, it's, you know, Pat Tewiler and Jared Nicholson are my two people, if we're so lucky to be the two people. And then they would have someone at the table to check those two people and have them in. My recommendation would be to go with that, not just for English and Classical, which are the two Greater Boston League schools, but also for Lynn Tech. And revisit it on February 10th. There was one other point that I wanted to make. Oh, and this, it's this one. And this is more of an anecdotal kind of piece, just to kind of keep in mind. And talking with the high school principals today, one talked about how, you know, this has kind of addressed itself. Attendance at games was already pretty low, but we think making a strong statement around safety by going this route would be good just in the short term.
Dr. Tewiler? I just want to note that the middle schools are following the same protocols.
Yep.
Any questions?
Does that need to be in a form of a motion? Or can we just accept the decision made by Dr. Tewiler?
I think, do you have a preference, Dr. Tewiler? I think we can, we can take a vote if people are, want to ratify it, if someone wants to make a motion.
Sure. I'd like to move that we support that statement with regards to the spectating levels for athletic events.
I second that.
Motion made, second. A roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Just one question on that, and the visiting teams will understand that.
They also will be permitted two spectators. So it's going to be a uniform approach. So, you know, if, you know, Medford was coming in, the AD will communicate to the Medford Athletic Director that it's two per athlete, and they'll set up a system to invite those guests in when they arrive.
Okay. And there was a game that was canceled today that we're not back in canceling. I think it was girls' basketball, English classical?
I'd have to get back to you on the specifics around that, but I know that there's, the boys are playing. It might have been COVID-related, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding signing of warrant. Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. In your packet, I put a handout that you've probably seen. And then, I know we have some new members, but prior to 2016, every month, we put out a warrant of all the bills of all our vendors, and we pay once a month through the city. So we receive that, and we require to get majority of the school committee to sign it. So that seemed to be a problem, not only with us, but as you can see, there's legislation that was passed, because it's a possibility that to get four people to, or this committee to come in and sign once a month on a regular basis, or in a timely fashion, because to get the bills out and get people paid, it became an issue. So they passed this back in 2016. So we had John Ford, the committee chose John Ford, and he agreed. And luckily, he was a retiree, and it was easy. He lives right down the street. He would come in, review the bills, come in and sign within a day. We'd get it over to City Hall, and the checks could be sent out to vendors. So now that John's no longer run the committee, it'd be up to this board. And I don't need a decision tonight, I just put it on the agenda tonight for discussion purposes. The warrant doesn't come out till the end of January. We have a meeting scheduled January 27th, so that should be right around when the warrant would come out. So unless somebody really wants to do it, or the committee wants to elect someone to do that, we could go this way. Or, you know, if the committee feels that they want to go back the old way, they would have that choice. So as of right now, we do not have an authorized person, and we would need a vote of the school committee to authorize. Also, for informational purposes, every school committee person does get the monthly warrant electronically sent to them, you know, every month. So you have the chance to review it. If you ever have questions, you're welcome to contact me directly. Some people in the past will. They'll call me and say, "What's this for? I don't understand." And this, so we just, I will provide that information to that individual as need be. So there's always that chance. You'll still get it, you just don't have to come in and sign. So, and I'm open to the committee's wishes.
We had Member Capola, then Member Gately, yeah. Member Capola? Oh, was that, are you volunteering to do it?
No, I wasn't volunteering, I was volunteering Lenny Penya.
Oh, terrific. Okay.
Showing interest in that. He was questioning that, and he showed an interest, so.
Excellent, yeah. I'm all for that.
Someone shows an interest, you grab them right away.
Absolutely. That's, no, that's a great service. Yeah, terrific. Yeah, yeah. Member Gately.
When we first got on the committee, I found it very useful to read through the warrants, because we had to sign every month. I highly recommend that everybody does that, and I would like to work with Lenny, reading through it, signing it. If he has any questions, him and I could do it, because I am now retired, so I have a little extra time. Not a lot, but a little.
Thank you. Member Gately. Member Castellanos.
So I do have, I do work for the state, I have an ethic question. Not to say I'm not in agreement with Lenny, he does work for the city in a capacity. Is that, is that okay? Is that authorized? Are we walking into?
The city, he works, I believe, for the water department. That's a separate entity, all completely set up, they're not funded by the city. They're a separate entity completely, so that would not be an issue. We don't, and also, we do not pay, I mean, obviously, there are, we don't pay the water bills here out of the school budget. If there are water bills, they're paid from the City Hall, so that wouldn't even be anything. He's not approving anything that would affect him, unless he owns a business that does, anyone that owned a business does business with the Lynn Public Schools wouldn't be eligible to sign.
No, I understand. It just, it just turns to just, for Lenny's, he's, you know, he's got to still check in with his employer. I think that's still feared. I think you would be, you should have a conversation, just because it's, in terms of just, they are, even they're an entity, I think that'd be something that I just want to bring up.
No, and again, you know, I'm not sure what time he gets out of work at the end of the day, but, you know, if he gets out of work at like 3:30, we're open for a little bit. We've made arrangements for, in the past, for extended time or working around whatever their schedule is. Just that, we only ask that once the warrant comes out, you know, within a day or so, because the checks, they like to send the checks out on a Thursday at City Hall. And if they don't, we don't have a signature on it, they can't send them out till that time. Then what happens is we get a lot of phone calls from vendors saying, you know, "When am I getting paid?" Because we only pay once a month. So, you know, people want to get paid, we would like to get those out at that point.
I just want to make sure that Member Penya knows what he's signing up for.
Don't tell him.
Member Magnolia?
Do we need a vote to have Member Penya? Okay, I'd like to move that Member Penya sign the warrants.
Second.
Motion made, second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McHugh. Next item is the fiscal year 2022 net school spending update. Dr. Tewiler, Mr. McHugh.
Do you want me to take it?
Please.
So I just, since we have some new members, again, I just kind of put together, I'd like to, some new members, I'd like to take a minute to provide a brief overview of the net school spending in Chapter 70, just so hopefully you'll have a better understanding. Each year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education... Each year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, determines the amount of funds each school district is required to spend on education. This amount is called net school spending. Net school spending is based upon a lot of factors, but the simple explanation is that net school spending is based upon the city's ability to pay and what the Department of Education feels should be spent on education. So, once they determine what the city's ability is to, ability to pay, they fill in the rest with Chapter 70 funding to give us the rest. For example, I just use the, just to keep it simple, if net school spending is $100,000, the city's ability to pay is $25,000, then they give a Chapter 70. So, it's built upon the city's ability first, then Chapter 70. Some people think it's the other way around. It's not. So, that's the way the process works. At, after the end of each fiscal year, we are required to complete a report to the state of all the school expenditures. This report also includes all the budget expenditures as well as any funds the city expended towards education, and they call those in-kind contributions. So, for example, the majority of the city expenses are health insurance, because if you looked at our budget book, which I'm, all the new members got, there's no health insurance in there. The school custodians are all on the city side, and all the maintenance costs. Those are the probably three biggest buckets of monies that the city expends for us. There are some administrative costs, because they do process, again, as a warrant, and they hand that. Some of those costs are in, but they're very small amounts. So, after the submit, the submission of this year's report, we believe that we, the city believes we might be a little short on the meaning net school spending. And the reasoning for that is the health insurance costs have gone down. So, every year, we budget, just like we do, we submit a budget, and our budget is this, and we expend the budget. Typically, we expend our full budget because we, you know, we need to make sure we meet net school spending. So, it's based on most of our budget, as you'll see, if you look through the book, it's like 80% salaries, and the rest are transportation sped and some other supply cost. So, with that said, there is a deficiency at this state. We believe there's going to be a deficiency. Every year, we get a letter if there's a deficiency. If we don't, we don't get a letter. But as of right now, we have not received any communication from the Department of Ed about showing any type of deficiency to us. However, in talking with the city CFO, he alluded to me that his city health insurance costs came in a lot less than what he believed they would have been. So, we believe that we're going to be a little bit short on net school spending. If you are short, every year, they take that difference that you're short and just add it to this current year. So, that's what would happen. So, at this point, he is willing, he's going to go to the city council on January 25 and ask them to appropriate an additional $900,000 to the Lynn School Department. So, we just learned about this just over the holiday period, over conversations back and forth. So, once we get that, we'll come back to you with some more information once, if the city council approves that. I assume they will. If they give it to us, we'll then put it into our budget and talk to you at that point. So, that's kind of where we're at. It's a fluid situation, but if we get a letter, that'll tell us exactly what the difference is. But based on the CFO's health insurance number, he thinks that's going to cover us and get us back to 100% net school spending. So, if there's any questions, I, hopefully, I can answer the poll.
We had Member Capola.
I would, I hope that the city council does approve that $900,000, because we certainly still have things going on that we really need it for. But in particular, I don't want to see us get into the predicament we did a few years back, where we didn't reach 100% net school spending, and we were fined, and, you know, we paid, we paid the price for that for quite a few budgets. And that just hurt our students and staff, you know, as far as, you know, paying that back.
Right. I don't believe that's the case. Based on my looking at it, you know, and I, because I actually put all the numbers in, and I get the city numbers, they give me those, so I don't have any input on where they come from or how that. But based on my, I think, I think his numbers did come in less. I agree with that. But we haven't got it, and usually, you'll, December, we've always received those letters. And we're in January now. We haven't received anything. So, if we're just short a little bit, like 900, that's like, you know, less than, it's a very small percentage.
Don't tell the city council that. We would prefer to have the $900,000.
Well, either way, either way, Miss Capola, as I stated, if we are short 900, and they do nothing, it gets added to this year. So, then they're going to have to make it up anyway. So, that's the rules. I don't see, you know, them taking, you know, or using the funds differently to, you know, short, shortchange us in the numbers. I think, you know, we had those discussions way back when. I remember those. And I remember Ms. Capano sitting here and asking the same questions, and we had those clear discussions about where we thought we were going to be.
Right.
I don't, I would sit here and tell, I don't see that. I don't see a drastic drop. If anything, they've been providing additional compensation, you know, or salaries, funding to us. So, I think we're going to be okay this year. You know, it's still early. I'm trying to see, and, you know, there may be some more discussion about this as we go forward, because the good news is I think CFO and I have been talking on, like we said in the past, on a somewhat regular basis to communicate. So, we're on the same page, and I think that's a good thing. I really think that's a positive, that we're all in it together. And, you know, I know the former mayor, I'm sure, you know, this current mayor, being a former school committee, is going to be, you know, feeling that we need to be, you know, getting our education what we deserve to get, that's, you know, because nobody wants to get in that problem again.
Thank you.
Yeah. Member Capola, I would just say, it's a great point. It was an important takeaway from what happened several years ago, and I think that's exactly why we're on top of this now and addressing it in the way that we are. So, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great. Fiscal year 2023, budget timeline priorities.
Yeah, we'll stay with budget. In your package, you received, it's a nine-step approach to developing the budget. It's more of a timeline. I just wanted to say a few words about it. While I would say that we're excited to begin the FY23 budget planning, in reality, those conversations are well underway and have been for some time. That said, what you have before you outlines as accurately as I can say at the present moment, our plans to develop the FY23 budget. I'll start by saying that we have plenty of stakeholder input to bring to bear on that effort. We have the existing strategic plan and Student Opportunity Act plan. Further, we know what families in the broader community feels is important for students, for students' learning at the present moment and in the short term, which we collected pretty substantively through the, our work to develop the SIR-3 allocation plan. The key here is to put all of the pieces of the puzzle together in a way that maximizes the experience and outcome for our students. More concretely, next week, we will hold a principal-director meeting, at which time, we will review this timeline as well as present them with a new budget reflection framework. I personally am really excited about this. I might be alone on that, but I'm excited about it, about this mechanism for capturing their best thinking around the needs for the 2223 school year. This framework will allow us to capture the essence of their need, of the needs, understand the rationale. It'll also provide for us a bird's eye view on what strategic objectives are emphasized, what acceleration pillars are emphasized, and will help us easily point out leadership and direct service positions. More to come there. It's just about ready, and again, I'm excited about it. Through the months of January and February, we'll engage in an effort to understand the requests and begin putting the pieces together, all the while consulting the feedback-rich documents that we've already composed. Once the governor's budget is released and the city has a chance to do its analysis, we'll be given a final number, which will allow us to begin finalizing our proposal. You will note in this timeline that there's mention of a Student Opportunity Act amendment. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is holding webinars on exactly what that is, and ours is scheduled for next Tuesday. So, at our next meeting, I'll come back and report exactly what the deal is with that. But I know that that amendment is due in April, and I've also scheduled time to present more formally what we, what our best thinking is around shifts or changes that we would make relative to that funding. And finally, we always attempt to round the final corner in May. I don't know that it's ever happened, but we will try, once again, and keep trying, as the timeline outlines. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Member Magnolia.
Thank you. Out of curiosity, you said that you have a lot of stakeholder information already, and I'm wondering about the, the combination of formal and informal processes to gather this stakeholder information, particularly how information from each school's council is incorporated into this. So, can you talk a little bit about the formal and informal mechanisms for gathering this information?
Yeah. So, the formal ones came actually somewhat through informal processes. So, you think about, you know, two years ago with the Student Opportunity Act plan, there were in-person meetings held with community members, families, students. Sheila and I just walked around, went school to school, talking with teachers about what was important to them. There were formal surveys that were also connected to the development of that document. I would say the same is so for the SIR-3 grant. That was more survey-focused. But you do raise a good point about the importance of the school site councils being involved in the, and giving input on the development of, of the development. In years past, we've asked principals to have conversations at their school site council meetings, to share kind of the, you know, from the principal's standpoint, what they think the priorities are, but to get input from other members of their council, and we actually required that. Like, that box had to be checked before we would sit down with them and discuss, and we will do that again this year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to say, I don't know that that happened last year, but last year, things didn't work off.
This year's a tough year, but we'll get it done this year.
But we'll do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, next item on the agenda is the operating protocol review. Dr. Tewa.
Yeah, that's me. And I apologize, because I think the descriptor or the term "review" might be a little bit of a misnomer. But, you know, in your package, you received a copy of Lynn School Committee Operating Protocols. This is a document that we collaboratively developed, Lynn School Committee, Lynn Public Schools Administration. In my first year as superintendent, I think we spent actually a couple of meetings really diving deep and discussing, you know, at a high level, how we're going to work together. I really love this document. I love the statement at the very beginning, and I love how it breaks down really clearly three, three pillars that we both commit to, and then, you know, substantively, what sort of actions we're, we commit to engaging to make those, those pillars real. And so, this was developed, again, three years ago. It was updated last February, excuse me, last April. And our plan is, I mean, it's still alive and a live document right now. Our plan is to revisit this whenever our summer retreat is scheduled, and we'll, because we've got new members, and we'll give this a fresh look. But because this is such an important document and represents the commitments that we make to working with one another, we thought it important to, A, given that this is the first meeting for new members, to bring this to the fore, B, to commit to having a laminated copy in your packet each, each time we meet for reference. And then, C, I propose that this be a standing agenda item once per month, where we take the time to really make it a living document and have a discussion around how we're doing with, with what we've committed to. So, we really wanted, I wanted to take the time in this meeting, the chair as well, just to bring these forward, acknowledge that they're really important in terms of the agreements that we make and working with another, one another, and then just sort of lay out a rhythm where we would revisit these and check in to see how we're doing with it.
Thank you, Dr. Tewa. Member Gailey?
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Tewa. I, reading this, it was great to read the School Committee Operating Protocols, and I support it, you know, I support, I support the language in it. It's good to have it as a living document. But I like to see us, you know, when we get the report from the survey, from the parent and the staff, maybe if there's anything that we could add to it after that, and bring this back to another meeting. I also like to see it be, you know, the document be interactive. For example, you know, there could be some hyper, you know, there could be some hyperlinks to certain, especially things that make sense. So, if you have things that need data, you know, parent information, you know, things like that, you know, information, you know, documents that they can search. For example, if someone hits the goals, you know, superintendent goals, that'll go directly, send a link directly to the goals, you know, things like that, just to make it interactive, especially for guys like me.
Okay.
Make it easy, you know? So, but I like, I like the language, and I support it.
That's great. Thank you, Member Penya. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Tewa, for the presentation. Look forward to revisiting these with the, with the group. We may set aside more time to do that and to, you know, honoring these and working with these as we, as we move forward. All right. So, the next item is the school committee, subcommittee assignments. So, I have assignments here, and just wanted to put it on the agenda so we could explain a little bit about what we did here. I think it'll, for the most part, look familiar. But basically, we worked hard to honor people's preferences in assigning the subcommittees. And well, for the most part, the list is probably familiar. We, there were a couple of subcommittees that hadn't really been, whose business was being taken care of in other forums. The grant subcommittee, you know, the district has made a lot of progress on grants, and there was a feeling that there was no longer a need for the particular subcommittee. The other one that you'll see here that's not there is the finance subcommittee, not because it's not very important what we do, but we've typically done the budget all together as a group, and no one sort of submitted that as a top preference, and so we felt like we could give that a shot. And then, Member Castellanos requested the addition of a diversity, equity, and inclusion subcommittee, and so we added that as well. The other, the other thing I wanted to note is that we did work really hard to honor people's preferences. Obviously, it wasn't possible for all of them. One in particular, the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee, every member had that as one of their top priorities, which, which it's obviously one of the top priorities for the district. So, I totally understand. And I think it's just a good indication that a lot of what we do, we are all interested in and have a stake in. And so, I think for a lot of those topics, you know, we're best served by having those on the, on the agenda when we're all, you know, here and on the committee, because we're all very interested and engaged. And some of these subcommittees, I think, can be, can be more useful when they're sort of specialized topic that maybe you're not as interested in having the whole, or not needed as having the whole group there together. So, that's the plan. Any questions? Yeah. Member Castellanos.
So, I want to thank, thank you, Mayor Nicholson, and your staff and your team for, for meeting with us. I know you took time with, you know, with this transition and really hearing us out and what, you know, what we're looking forward to the next few years, and I appreciate the DEI Subcommittee addition. I believe it's very important that we have that platform. And, yeah, I look forward to collaborating with my fellow colleagues in the district and constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Castellanos, thank you. Great. So, so the next item is request for executive sessions. I'm open to a motion to amend the agenda, to move Section 9, testing my Roman numeral reading, to the top of the agenda where we are now, if we want to do that before we break for executive session.
So, moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. So, then that brings us to communications and information.
So, in your packets, there's an enrollment report, the report reflecting January 1. The annual the annual report for the North Shore Consortium, and then I've got a superintendent's report with some updates. So I happen to believe that an educator's professional calendar is among the best. In the span of nine to 10 months, we have two opportunities to reflect on and make commitments to personal and professional goals. With the onset of the 2022 calendar year, we were presented another opportunity to take stock, to reflect and make plans, and/or renewed commitments for the remainder of the school year, but also the calendar year ahead. A school year in this context is not going to be without challenge. But as we began the new calendar year, our commitment to providing an excellent education in a safe and healthy environment remains our foremost commitment. Our venture into 2022 calendar year has presented predictable challenges related to COVID-19. The holiday surge in positive cases has not spared our community. Nonetheless, schools remain open and in-person services continue. We believe we'll be able to sustain this and are following a robust, multi-layered set of protocols, the same that we proposed at the beginning of the school year. Monitoring for illness and staying home and ill, mask wearing, ventilation upgrades, cleaning and sanitizing, health and hygiene strategies at schools, and then opportunities to get the vaccine. What is more, we have resumed weekly testing for all students who have consented in staggered fashion. Next week, all schools will be in that queue. This additional approach to safety will expand to all schools next week. To be clear, positive COVID cases are inescapable. Nonetheless, we can limit the spread by fidelity to the multi-layered approach described above. And where appropriate and necessary, we will close a classroom or other small defined section to prevent the spread. This will be done, this will continue to be done in consultation with the city's health director, our liaison at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and as a last resort. Each school year, we develop a set of district-wide goals designed to meet student needs first and foremost, and to bring us closer to meeting one or more of the four objectives in our strategic plan. Additionally, when we develop a budget proposal for the upcoming school year, we align it with the strategic plan by illustrating how proposals work in service of meeting the strategic objectives. We do this intentionally because we believe in the plan and what it will do for our school community, and also to honor the community input and vote, and voice, both of which were significant pieces in development of the plan. Much has happened since the plan was completed in 2019. In many ways, circumstances have accelerated elements of the plan while other parts have paused. Given that we are at the approximate halfway of the plan, it seemed like the perfect time to do exactly what we do at the beginning of a new calendar year: take stock. We are, where are we in terms of achieving the objectives outlined in the plan? Are there shifts or tweaks that should be made? Are there adjacent strategies that we should consider? Where do the new ideas around acceleration fit in? I believe pretty strongly that the plan still has relevance, but these questions are important. Just as the development of the plan was done in full view of and in partnership with the broader community, so should the reflection on the plan. We're working on a plan to host an event to do just that. This will be an opportunity for all who are interested to hear about where we are in the plan and our best thinking in response to the aforementioned questions. Equally important, this will be an opportunity for stakeholder feedback. We are planning for this event to happen in late February. Just before the beginning of the 2022 calendar year, we received very good news from the Massachusetts School Building Authority on the Pickering Project. We successfully completed all of the requirements of the eligibility period ahead of schedule. The MSBA approved our transition to the feasibility study phase. During this phase, we are required to collaborate with the MSBA to document our educational program, generate an initial space summary, document existing conditions, establish the design parameters, develop and evaluate alternatives, and recommend the most cost-effective and educationally appropriate preferred solution to the MSBA. The first step of this, in this phase, involves designating an owner's project manager. This process will begin formally when the school building committee meets on January 20th, its kickoff. We are excited to begin taking steps forward in this process. Channeling the philosophy of the previous mayor, the current mayor, and my own personal philosophy, transparency and access will be key features for the broader community in this process. I will keep the committee updated by presenting an update at least once a month. Finally, two years ago, the committee voted to authorize the superintendent, me, the authority to evaluate registrations for students over the age of 20. Although this is not a frequent occurrence, it is one that we take seriously. In bestowing that authority to the superintendent, there was also a commitment to update the committee twice yearly. Thus far, this school year, we, there have been eight requests by students over the age of 20. Two were permitted to register. In these cases, the students were close to completion, and we have the appropriate supports to facilitate success. Those who were not, those who were not were referred to local partner organizations who can better support their needs. That is all I have.
Thank you. Yeah. Member Castellanos and Member Magnolia.
Dr. Tawilah, thank you so much for your superintendent's report. It's always greatly appreciated to hear that communication and those updates. Always thorough. I just had some questions. You did briefly, you touched in your superintendent's report. It was, I had a lot of staff reaching out around some of the COVID protocols and some of how we've been implementing it, and I'm just going to go over and feel free to answer accordingly. Just kind of a general stroke of questions. So now that we have implemented the test and stay for students, what is being done for the teachers who have five or more cases testing positive, or just cases in classroom generally? We are all close contacts at some point with the children in the classroom. Why are we not considered for the test and stay as well? Testing sites are so booked and purchasing at-home tests. And I, just to kind of go off of what my constituents stated is, I understand the governor did just reach, we just actually, will we have a more test? And I know that the clinics are running, but that is a concern right now, COVID, you know, we're seeing uptick, and hopefully, you know, I see the mayor's working diligently with the public health director. We're all working pretty diligently, but staff are worried. I know families, as you mentioned, we heard tonight, the virus is definitely, it's causing some concerns, so.
Yeah, and those concerns I understand completely. I mean, I would never marginalize, you know, someone's feelings about where we stand, or, you know, to be more frank, someone's fears about the current context. What I would say, I mean, there's a couple of things that you asked, and I'll try to make sure I answer all of them. First, related to test and stay, staff participation. State guidelines do not allow for that. And so, you know, inasmuch as we might want to do that, they've made abundantly clear that that is not a program that we can offer staff, and we run the risk of losing the supply that we get to participate in that program for kids. What we do offer staff is each day at 6:30 a.m., any staff who is, you know, experiencing mild symptoms can go to Marshall, Classical, or Shoemaker and get a rapid test. 6:30 a.m., the CIC health staff are there to provide that service for staff. During the day, if a staff, if any member of our staff is experiencing mild symptoms, they can get a test. But they cannot, if they have no symptoms, then they cannot participate in, you know, in that program. The other question, you're going to have to remind me, because there were a couple in there.
So just in terms of just to, I think you briefly touched, they can go get tested in the morning, 6:30, so.
6:30, yeah. We've had that in place since probably, since September.
And also, when you mentioned the state guideline not allowing, you know, when I, I hate to, when I hear that, you know, have we advocated, you know, to say, hey, you know, what's, and I see it's a state guideline, they're going to say, you know, this is what it is, but it's still, it's impacting the morale, you know, for us, I think some of the staff, you know, it's a morale hit, and what are we doing to advocate on their behalf?
So I would say two things on that really quickly. One, we are blessed with incredible nursing staff across our schools and in terms of leadership. They're on the phone with Desi, our Desi liaison, every single day. That was the other question you asked, just came back to me, around closing classrooms. I'm going to come to that in a second. And so we are giving feedback, honest and pointed, all the time. In my capacity as the co-chair of the Urban Superintendent Network, I have an opportunity. I have a platform for voicing concerns, and I know I'm not alone as I talk to other superintendents about that challenge. But it is, nothing has changed, but that doesn't mean that we aren't advocating for it regularly. With respect to classroom closures, each one of those has to be done on a case-by-case basis. The nursing staff evaluate the situation and make a determination or a recommendation. We have to be on the phone with the city's health director. We have to be on the phone with Desi before there's any decision to close a class. But there's a process that's followed for each one of those situations before a final decision is made to do that. In some cases where, you know, someone might say, well, there's this number of positive cases, why isn't that classroom closed? My quick response to that is, there must be other circumstances present that make the health officials feel like that is still a safe situation for in-person learning. And so we believe deeply in the importance of that, so we're going to continue with it. In other cases, they might say, you know, if maybe there's an inability to mask in that class, you know, or, you know, in a pre-gay class, you know, the kids don't distance well. They might make a decision based on the numbers, and it might even be a smaller number, to close that classroom. So there's no manual, there's no handbook that says, that has an if/then, kind of like, if this number of cases, do this. That doesn't exist. Case by case, each one is evaluated closely. We're in contact with the appropriate people, and then a decision is made.
I just want to say thank you for the communications, too. When we do, we have these situations arise, you do provide those communications very promptly, too. So I appreciate that, that's all.
We had Member Magnolia, and then Member Capola, and Member Pena, was that yours as well?
I was just going to ask.
Okay.
So I realize this is the superintendent's report, but this might actually be a question for the mayor and the superintendent jointly, which is, I know in our previous mayor's administration, when we looked to the Pickering Project, there was a hope that we could reuse some of the information from the last time Pickering was evaluated for a possible replacement. And I just am wondering, in your report about this, if indeed we can use any of the work that we did the last time around, or if the MSBA is requiring us to start over again?
Yeah.
Whoever.
He doesn't know this yet. I don't know if he's watching, but in the school committee look-ahead document, there was an agenda item for our meeting on the 27th with one of the people who I think is expert on the topic, and that's Mike Donovan. I was going to ask him to come and sort of shepherd us through what's possible, what's not, what this next phase looks like. So I would prefer to defer to him.
That's fine.
Prefer to defer. Say that 10 times.
That's fine. Thank you.
Member Capola.
How many of the test kits did we pass out to the staff?
Um, I think that total was around 1,500. Yep.
Okay. So how far off are we with some still not picking them up or wanting to take?
So we offered January 2nd, that Sunday, 8:00 noon, for faculty to come. Then we offered a second opportunity after school. The first Monday, we were back for staff to come. Our plan was to take what was left of those tests. And, you know, some principals had already communicated this, give one of those test kits to each elementary student because they are, you know, have the lowest vaccination rates, and the rates were, positive rates of COVID were pretty high. So that was our plan, but we don't quite yet have enough to do that. I was, I got an email from the Associate Commissioner this afternoon. Apparently, the last part of that shipment should be coming to us tomorrow, so then we'll be prepared to do that next week. But that's what, our plan was to do that for students. For staff, again, any staff who's experiencing symptoms every day of the week, and even over the vacation, they can go to any one of those three sites and get a rapid test. Or if it's during the day, they can get a rapid test on-site in school.
And the classrooms that we had to close, did those get any extra cleaning besides the cleaning that is, that we're normally doing?
Yeah. So you all want to talk about the process that we engage for?
So in terms of a classroom that's closed for COVID, those classrooms are sprayed and also sanitized in terms of going in and wiping down all surface areas, all high-touch areas, and that's done. The principal notifies ISD, and that's done that evening.
Thank you.
Member Pena?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Tawilah, for your report. One of my questions was already answered from Miss Magnolia. The other one was, there's three sites. Want to repeat those again?
Marshall, Shoemaker, and Classical, we tried to hit.
And that's at 6:00 a.m.?
6:30.
6:30.
6:30, and that's if they're feeling any symptoms.
If you have a fever or something like that, you should stay home. But if you have mild symptoms, maybe you have a headache, maybe you have sniffles, then you can, you can go to one of those sites. And they will, the staff at those sites will assess, they'll ask, you know what I mean? What's, what brings you here? And if they feel that the person needs to go home, they'll say that. But otherwise, they will get a rapid test right there and there.
Thank you.
Great. So I think we would be ready for a motion to request executive session.
Oh, my last piece.
Please.
Sorry.
Yes.
That JV game, girls' basketball, there were some positive cases that were discovered right before the games. They canceled it.
No, not at all.
I make a motion that we go into executive session for two issues. One is to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to Lynn Teachers Union, Local 1037, Administrators Association, Nurses, and Local 3157A, Clerical Union, Local 1736, Monitors, Teamsters, Local 42. The discussion of these matters, which involves strategy in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on and compromise the bargaining position of the public body. The second request for executive session is in regards to conduct strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, i.e. school committee attorney, and to discuss strategy with regards to ongoing litigation. The discussion of these matters, which involves litigation strategy in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on and compromise the litigating position of the City of Lynn, and the CHIO declares.
Second.
Any second. And roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Thank you. So go upstairs. All right. Is there a motion to close executive session, resume the meeting?
I make a motion to resume from executive session into the whole committee session.
Second.
Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay, so the last item on the agenda is the ratification of votes, if any, taken in executive session. On the first item, there was a vote taken to authorize Dr. Tawilah to impact bargain with the unions stated below.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Then the next item, there was a vote taken to schedule interviews for the school committee council candidates on Monday, January 24th.
Second.
Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Seeing no further business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Castellanos? Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
All right. You all for your.[1715.33]